Six thirty on Tuesday, January fifteenth. Entertaining a motion to approve the agenda as may be amended. Anything that we? Okay. Go ahead.
Just, again, I don't know if it's an agenda item or just other business. We opened a new account at Peoples related to that bond, the loan that we did last week.
Well, we could do that on the.
And that's what I figured. I just wanted to bring it up, so.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the agenda as presented? Please say aye.
I'll do approval in the minutes of January third.
Okay. Other than the fact that it says 2018, I didn't have anything on that one.
She saw last year.
I had to correct a bunch of checks. Motion to approve the minutes of January eighth.
All in favor of accepting the minutes of January third with one minor typo? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the minutes of January eighth, two thousand and nineteen.
And this is the same nine instead of eight? There's a couple of places where the nine's, where it's eight instead of nine. There, it's on the cover here. It's on the cover there. It's on the cover there.
Number three.
It was a very good year, right?
It was. Otherwise, I didn't have anything on this.
All in favor, Javay?
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the minutes of January eleventh.
And again, two thousand and nineteen?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't see anything.
I didn't. I, online, and she's already fixed it. David Boyer's name was spelled wrong, that's all. Online, but she's already corrected it in this, so.
And it's corrected online.
Okay.
I'm in favor of accepting the minutes of January eleventh with that one minor typo? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Select board concerns?
Things here in the meeting.
One thing, and I think I've already asked Chet this, at where East Mountain Road comes into the access road, I know I think I mentioned this to you, there's a pretty good-sized hole, and my question is, is that our road or the ski?
That's resort. That's the resort?
Okay.
Our town road doesn't begin until right about the grand.
Okay. All right. That was my question, because they had paved one side of it, and I didn't know why they didn't pave the side with the hole.
Wasn't in their budget.
Anything else? No?
But everything's in there.
Okay. Anything? It's citizen input time?
Sure. I'll just offer one thing. I know a couple of weeks ago, you had a monthly stop-in for base camp out there, which is right next to the Welcome Center. I'll come and voice his concern about the bus patterns into the Welcome Center, and picking up and dropping folks off. Mike came to my office before coming here and kind of said the same thing. So I had the opportunity to reach out to the executive director of Marble Valley Transportation, the bus, and we were actually able to hook up today, and he came up to the Welcome Center, and he had seen what was going on with the buses backing in, that it's actually not a, you know, protocol that they like to do, blind backup like that. So he had said that the original reason why they were doing that was a former town manager didn't like that the buses were kind of cutting off and ruining some of the flower beds that were there, so asked them to change that around. And I said, well, that's definitely not the case, and if there's issues with flower beds, we can deal with that, but we would much rather have them come around, pick up in front of the Welcome Center. So he said that he would instruct his drivers to do that, and it might take a few days in order for it to get all down there. But as of this evening, I think every single driver today was making that pattern. So we're going to put some benches underneath the porch, under the covering there, so folks can wait there in the evening time. And the other thing that he had put out there was that they would, throughout their routes across the county, would like to put some shelters up. And, you know, I had said that, you know, Killington would love to be able to kind of lay claims to having one, whether that be at the Welcome Center or somewhere else up on the Killington Road or elsewhere. We'd like to have that conversation. So I kind of put that bug in his ear and asked him to put a pin in that and think of us when it came around time. He said it probably wouldn't know until March when funding would come down for that. So, but I think we've solved the interim problem right now with that bus pattern, and we're going to do some signage with lawn signs within the Welcome Center, let riders know that they should wait underneath the porch in order to be picked up.
Because that was part of his question, that they were going in the store?
Correct.
To wait for the bus, to get out of the weather.
Right, right.
So at least we've given them, hopefully we solve the problem somewhat, that they can wait in somewhat cover, you know, they'll be in the porch. It's not as luxurious or warm as Mike's place, but at least the building will be able to serve that purpose.
Okay.
So I wanted to report that.
Okay.
Mention anything about the bus in the summertime?
We didn't talk about that. We were hoping to just keep the conversation going about shelters and, you know, hopefully in the next couple of months.
I'll follow up with Mary down at Redland Regional.
Yeah, this isn't exactly the time to be building shelters anymore.
No, but I think to Jim's point about running a shuttle later on.
No, a shuttle later on, on Sunday, past six o'clock.
Yep.
They started with Mary down at the Redland Regional, and we met up with somebody from the bus, who was supposed to get back to us. So I'll follow up with that.
Okay. Anything else? You okay with?
Yeah.
Great. Number six, Vermont Department of Taxes, equalization study results.
I apologize. I had run out unexpectedly around noon today, but I did have the chance, I was going to bring the other sheet for last year, which is what Jim had requested last meeting. The equalization rate for this year is ninety-nine point four-three, and last year's was just a hair over one hundred and three percent. So that would be about a four percent differential. But I don't have the exact number with me. I did leave the sheet on my desk.
Ninety-nine point four-three?
This is ninety-nine point four-three, and last year's was one oh-three point something.
And that's the CLA?
Yes.
Okay. And the reason why I asked for that, Chet, is sitting on the other board, you know, we're looking at a almost six cents increase at the budget that's in front of us at the school board, but we kind of are pushing back right now to get some more answers. But a six cents increase, we've got to remember, we lost two cents of the incentive from the state.
Right.
But in the past, whatever that tax rate was, they subtracted three percent off of that to get you down to a hundred.
Right.
Now they're going to be adding.
Half a percent.
A half a percent. So there's three and a half percent.
Right.
Just on the value of the.
Right.
So it's, just that alone is more than six cents.
Right.
Because it's like a dollar sixty-two, I think, is the regular, or a dollar fifty-two? So right along there is.
So when do you expect the school district to have a budget that we, they could give us an anticipated tax rate for the book?
Um, I'll bring that up in executive session underneath personnel of, you know, because it is school board stuff that's in the town, all right?
Okay.
I don't want to, I mean.
No, that's fine. I just was going to ask.
We have seven is bond declaration and resolution certificate language.
Yeah, I forwarded you, last week, I met with Paul Giuliani, our bond counsel from Primer Piper, and went over our financial plan and potential financing plan. Assuming that the public safety building, the old debt service, and the million dollars in road improvements were on the ballot, we prepared, he prepared these resolutions and the article language for those numbers. We'd have to fill in those numbers and get them to him, but this will make sure that we will meet all the requirements for obtaining bond funds. The one issue he did mention is that when it comes to the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank, the old debt, meaning writing off the million-dollar balloon payment, the two-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand dollars, the two-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand dollars for the golf course, what they're owed, and the potential FEMA payback would not be able to be included with proceeds from the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank. They want to do really assets and things like that only. So that would basically be a refinancing that we would do with Peoples of the golf course loan to do that correction. So that would be separate. The five-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand that was part of Irene could be included in the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank, because it was for assets. It's specifically for ravine and stage road bridges.
Right.
So those, we would have to separate those two into two different financing mechanisms, but the overall approval is just the total amount of dollars, and how we finance it will be separate. And he did mention, I forwarded you all the email, he did mention that for the refinancing of old debt, a public vote is not required.
Because the select board has the authority.
Has the authority to do it. He said, in this case, based on what we're trying to do, he said it's probably a good idea to get everybody so they're all on board with the whole process, but it is not a requirement for refinancing old debt.
Just a question, the five-eighty-eight on Irene, considering that some of it was written off, would he accept that number of the five-eighty-eight?
Well, even if we write it off in our books, we still never raised the capital. And I did, I mentioned that it's not a matter of that we wrote it off, because we, all we did was take it out of our cash. We never financed.
Okay.
The project shortfalls that we had.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure that that's a valid number to be using with bond.
So that was all I had on that, and this is just language that, once we get the final items, I'll be putting together the final articles, forwarding them on to our council and bond council for all of the items that were, that are proposed to go on the ballot this year, and then having a special meeting after any potential petitions come in. We have to wait till the petition deadline before we can actually warn the meeting.
So my only question on here, of reading this, is that we've been putting a number of four million dollars in for a public safety building?
Right.
And now we're talking four.
Well, no, when he took my, when he took the sheet that I've been working with the board on, it had four and a half million dollars in there for the calculation, so he just took the numbers off of that sheet. The calculation for the annual payments was four and a half million. Just so, I mean, it was just for argument's sake, because I wasn't sure where we were going to be between four and four and a half.
Okay, but everything that we've been.
I know, we've always talked about around four million, and we're close, but I'm not, I will know that answer tomorrow, what that final number is.
So this does not, you're looking for an approval on this today?
No.
Okay.
So this is part of, once I put the articles together, that we then have to fill in these blanks?
Okay.
This was, this was to go just through the language and see, and just make you aware of all the pieces that we have to accomplish. This is an FYI, almost.
Okay, good enough. Thank you. Thanks, Chet.
Yep. And then the very end of it would be the wording for the article? Is that correct?
Yes, they have, he's got two articles in there for those.
Without a dollar in mouth.
Right.
Okay.
We just, he, we, those were just placeholders for the discussion, so.
Okay. Do you have an update from John and company as far as the public safety building beyond what we already had? We had talked to them about changing the roof lines.
Yeah, no, we're on the flat roof. We're on, we're on the flat roof, the cheaper option. We'll be going over those final things, and that's another thing we'll discuss when I get, oh, we're on that now, right? Okay. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't shift gears with you. The, the plan is tomorrow, we will have what we will call the final budget number. I've gotten some quotes for things like site work, that saved about another two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. So we're waiting to just compile the rest of it tomorrow, and we'll know what the building cost is, and then there's one other variable that I won't talk about yet that is going on tonight, that will have an effect on what that final article is.
Right.
So my hope is, basically after tomorrow night, and anyone obviously is invited to come to tomorrow night's Public Safety Building Committee meeting, but we would then probably either as part of or as a special meeting, want to do a little brief presentation to the select board as to what would be requested to be put on as an article.
And what time is that meeting, in case anybody watches?
Four-thirty tomorrow at the library.
Okay.
So my, this is nothing to do with a public safety building, in or out or whatever. It has to do what I've been saying all along, but when I go to the website and the KVFD, the last meeting minutes was August fifteenth of two thousand and eighteen, and the next meeting is to be determined.
So we will have.
But we're having a meeting tomorrow, and this needs to be put up for our decision by, like, within ten days. And, you know.
There'll be, those other minutes will be up tomorrow. I apologize for that. That's, that's my fault. I did receive them from the architect, who's been keeping the minutes since we started with their process in September.
I was just going to leave it at that. I mean, it's.
Well, when you say KVFD, is that the fire department itself?
No, the Public Safety Building Committee meetings.
This is public safety. Okay.
Public Safety Committee meetings.
Number nine, golf course.
National Golf Course.
GMNGC?
This spreadsheet, the blue one, that you have, is the updated Brown Golf budget, including the cart leases, the seventy-one thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty dollars in capital expenses, and the cash infusion, which was the ninety-one thousand from the cart leases, and the net of negative six thousand, four-thirty, is what is proposed at this point. That's, that's the combination of what we requested at the last meeting.
And none of the personnel things have been put into here yet, because those discussions haven't happened until we.
Well, the personnel won't technically, won't necessarily change the budget a lot in the beginning, it's just a matter of where those things go. And I did get the revised language, and it's highlighted on this other sheet.
Right, I see that.
So, and without any objection, I will sign that tomorrow and then begin that next process.
Can we just jump to that right away?
Sure.
The agreement?
Sure, it's part of this.
Yeah. So the only thing that's changed is the bottom.
Bottom sentence.
Manager and owner further agree that at all times during this management agreement, owner shall retain final decision-making authority for all aggregate department management. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the town manager to go ahead and sign.
Okay. Do we need any further discussion on that?
I think that clearly states what we wanted, right?
Well, this is what we asked for.
Right.
It's now right there.
So.
So all in favor of having the town manager sign this agreement? Please say aye.
Aye.
Approving the golf course budget itself without getting into personnel or whatever, because I still have like one or two questions of the budget that would deal with personnel that I would like to, and then we can come out.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, so we're going to hold that till later?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we will take the golf course budget and table it until executive session? And this page for Green Mountain National is a summary of two thousand and eighteen. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, this is the year-end financials, which is actually item twelve on your agenda. So we can skip to it.
So we want to just deal with the, all this golf course stuff now?
That's fine. So the golf course, the report's been about the same throughout. We had very few expenses in December. The only thing that we do have is about a four thousand, two-hundred-dollar additional monies that have to go to the golf course from the town. When we did all the debt service payments, all of the payments were made, but one of the interest payments did not get transferred over, so we will be, we're transferring that four thousand over, but it won't show for last year.
Moving it from the town to the golf course?
To the golf course, that we, to pay the bond debt. So we'll be making that correction, which will then show, when the auditor does his audit, will show it as a receivable for last year.
Okay. Do we have a treasurer's report in here or no?
No. Not in your packet, but I have it up here on the board.
Right. And it should just go to the golf course, which is showing there. So there is around nineteen thousand dollars between the two of them?
Correct.
Okay, is that including the four thousand that you're talking about?
No, that is not.
Okay. And then the expenses for last month, December, was around ten thousand dollars, I believe, or whatever?
Yeah, ish.
Ten thousand, eleven thousand dollars there.
Right.
So, okay. So there's, there's nineteen thousand in now, which should at least get us through January.
Well, we've already, we've already been funded for the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Okay.
So we, cash flow-wise, we'll be fine. That actually funded a couple of days ago.
Okay, great.
That's part of what we're signing tonight, because when we moved all of the accounts from TD Bank to Peoples, we opened this new account, which is this signature authority.
I know we signed it the other day. I wasn't sure how fast it would.
It actually funded.
I was going to say, at least we have, if we're running on the eleven thousand dollar expense of December to January.
It funded, it funded yesterday.
Okay, great.
So now that upfront money.
Oh, and the other piece, I want to remind you, there was, we had received a bill from Brown in December for about fifteen thousand dollars. They sent an email requesting, well, do we want to just make the difference of the twenty thousand? The other thing to keep in mind, that nineteen thousand does not include the twenty thousand. We did not receive it before the end of December.
What, twenty thousand?
The twenty thousand dollar escrow payment.
Yeah.
So what, because they didn't make it, and we were getting the note anyway, we've decided to let them just hang on to the escrow at this point, so they're just carrying the escrow.
Okay, so the twenty thousand is escrow coming back to us.
So we don't have to escrow them for this coming?
Again, we'd have to give it to them in two months again, anyway.
Right. What's the fifteen you were talking about?
No, the fifteen and the four, the, the.
Oh, okay.
This nineteen thousand we have does not include the twenty thousand that would be to the good.
I thought you said there was a bill for Brown for fifteen.
No, 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 because you'd have about twenty thousand, nineteen thousand there, twenty thousand with the escrow, plus the forty-two hundred we got to give it. So that's where the, that's where the golf course officially sits.
Okay. All right. Do you need a motion to accept this?
Sure.
Motion to accept the Green Mountain National Golf Course, what would we call this, end-of-year?
It's end-of-year financials. Then we got to have the audit done, anyway.
The budget we're waiting on.
Financial report.
End-of-year financial report. Okay. All in favor of the, approving the Green Mountain National Golf Course end-of-the-year financial report? Please say aye.
Aye.
And the reason the treasurer's report is not on the agenda, it's here for our reference, I'm going to ask that we don't approve that at this time. Several corrections that the auditor requested in December have created some issues in the restricted fund accounts, and the best example I can give you is the one of the Route Four Sewer. They gave us a.
Three hundred thousand.
It's like three hundred, it's a two-hundred-and-eighty-some-thousand-dollar accumulated depreciation correction that somehow, with the numbers he used, ended up showing in the fund balance, which took it out of cash, where all it's supposed to do is affect value.
Right.
So we're trying to get that clarified, and as soon as I get that clarified, we'll bring the treasurer's report in corrected. And the current, the treasurer's report's as it sits today, what we did is.
And that would be a correction as of June thirtieth, correct?
There's a, yeah, we got to go back to June thirtieth to correct, and then the current one. Because this, these are all corrections that were put in, and this forty-three thousand dollars that the Route Four Sewer is negative does not consider that. We're assuming right now that, we know that's not supposed to come out of cash, and it's in the treasurer's notes, that, that there's a correction coming, and we just got to, we got to get the accounting correctly, corrected, because the way we're set up is just with a fund, that the auditor is treating it as a asset and liability fund versus a cash fund, which is how we're treating it, and those two things don't go together. So we're, we got to get it separated and nimmred.
And I'm not asking, I was just asking for the treasurer's report, if we had it for the golf course part.
Right, no, that's fine. I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Can you put that screen back up again? Since you have it up?
You want this one?
Yeah. So we do agree, though, that the bridge in Large Culvert is at a negative twenty-six?
That also has a correction, as does by two minutes resurfacing. They went back and corrected the beginning of the year balances.
But are we agreeing with those numbers? That's all I'm asking.
Not yet. Not officially.
All I'm saying is, if we do come down to that, we agree with them, have we changed the Excel spreadsheet to actually add instead of subtract negatives?
On this?
On, on the treasurer's restricted funds.
No, but what we, what, because this is, I know, I know what you're.
If you add everything up, what, if those numbers are true, the seven, if all those negative numbers are true, what should actually be in restricted fund is seven ninety plus the forty-three, plus the twenty-six, plus the.
Right, that's the liability, that's the liability we have, but this actually just is talk about the cash balance, so we're going to identify the liability to the restricted fund in a, in a separate line item.
Okay, that would be actually better anyway.
Because you got to, this, this just tells us the cash, what the cash is in the checking account, and then we can have the idea of what the liability to that account is.
Yeah, but if you go, then go to the first page of the treasurer's report, not that one, the tre, yeah.
I know, I just got to go, I got to get over there.
I understand what you're saying there, but go to the top?
Yep.
Okay, so it's telling you how much cash is on hand.
Okay, in this place, yes, I agree with you.
And then it's telling you that the restricted funds, and the restricted fund number is way off of what it should really be.
It should be the restricted liability fund.
It should be restricted liability.
Right. And, and, okay, that, that I agree with.
Okay, that's great.
Okay.
We're good.
Yep, we're good, and we'll get it piece by piece.
I'm good. How much do we expect to get in in February?
It's usually just a, right around three million, maybe a hair under.
Okay. So three million plus two-point-six?
Yeah.
That's five-point-six. Four-point-five is going to the state of Vermont in June.
Yeah, which is why we run out in the morning.
With the restricted funds, and then we have to get through January, February, March, April, May, June.
But that, that three million is of taxes alone, correct?
Yes.
Okay. But there is other revenues that will be coming in.
Oh, yeah, we still have, we still have some, the, the options tax.
Yeah.
The options tax will be coming in, and the other miscellaneous revenues.
Yes, okay.
So.
We'll, we'll be looking for another million dollars at, at this point, unless the vote.
Well, technically.
If the vote doesn't.
If, if all things are equal, we should be looking for seven fifty, because we just took two fifty that we had borrowed out, so there should be a seven fifty difference.
But what I'm getting at is, so the vote happens March, whatever.
Fourth.
Fourth, Tuesday. And then you got thirty days in case that you can't do anything that you said you were going to vote on, borrow.
Just in case.
So that, yeah, just in case someone comes forward, whatever. So then it's April. We really don't borrow money until May.
Usually borrow it in May for a June one deposit.
May, everything works out. We may not be borrowing if everything works.
Potentially.
Right. We just have to see the real number.
It's all, it's all about the timing, because usually we borrow so that the money is funded on the same day we got to pay the state, because we're, we can survive until we make that state payment.
Right, right. Okay. All right. I'm good with that.
Okay.
So we have, number 10 is the 2020 general fund budget.
Yep. The general fund budget is what we presented at the last time, where we took out the other $28,000. There's really no change in it. It was just updating the capital project funds. What we did is, we did the reallocation that we discussed at the last meeting. Everything else is pretty much as we left it. And taking that number, and then applying it to this sheet, you know, with our tax rate, it did reduce our expense a little bit, because we did take out about a half a cent, which is why we're down to 220, .220. And then before last, the current year we're in is .223. And the capital budget appropriations-
Do you have this on the screen for?
I do not. How about that? I should pay attention. Sorry about that. Everybody can follow along now. Okay. In the, this is the, the capital, this is the general fund expenses for the current year we're in, the 1,748. And the proposed year is 1,723, which is down about $25,000 from the current year we're in for operations. I did modify the number for the capital budget appropriations in the current year, and the reason for that modification was, when I was going back through, last year on the ballot, there was the $75,000 approved for the pool reserve fund. That money is actually in last year's tax rate. So the tax rate that's in the book, the .4051, does not include the 75,000 that was approved by the voters. What was approved by the voters was .4127.
Right.
Okay. So that's actually what went out on the tax bills for our current year. All right? So I added the $75,000 to last year's capital to make it a, an apples-to-apples comparison, which made that rate be 12 cents for the capital in the current year, and 16.6. So it's basically a 4.5 cent increase in the budget this year for getting capital to the sustainable level.
That's the standard budget.
That's the standard budget. And then the operations, there's no change from what we discussed in the past, and the overall rate in this comparison has the .4276, which was reducing it by the 100,000, because I didn't make that correction in here.
Right.
The 4660 is the budget for this year, where it was actually 4998, I believe, when we talked last. So it's down a little bit for the overall general fund budget.
So now, the one, what we heard from the public is, is that, and, and we have to make this clear, that we're putting a budget forward, and in normal, it would say the tax rate is .466, and then we keep on moving from there. This vote is actually moving the tax rate because of the bond votes, correct? That the bonds don't hit to the following year?
All we're, yes, all we're voting on for next year's budget for payments is, is the change in the capital budget, which is the 4660. Okay? All of the other things, if the bonds are approved, will affect next year's tax rate, because if we take the loans out this year, the first payment isn't due till the following fiscal year. So if, if we were to do the 1 million for the roads, and the 2.133 million for the refinancing old debt, those will have an effect on next year's budget.
Approximately 3 cents.
It's actually 3.5 at this point, because it just, it works out to, yeah, just a hair rate, around 3.5.
And then it starts heading back down. And, and that's all I think that some people in the audience were saying, is that we have to be transparent, that the votes will increase down the road-
Right.
-and then come back down.
Yeah, well, that's, my intention is to show, in a blown-up fashion, the next, like, three years, so you can see how the progression works, so that people understand what they're actually voting for. Because what, the vote for this year, when you vote on this budget, it is strictly for the, the sustainable general fund budget for operations, capital, and debt service that we currently have.
I just don't want people to get confused by saying, well, no, you told us that if we voted this, then these were our tax rates going out.
Right.
It has to be very clear that this is what this vote is for.
Yep.
And then that anything that's added next year, or whatever, will change that number.
Correct.
Sounds silly that you have to explain that, but I just want to make sure.
No, not really, because it, this is confusing enough, because we have, there's, there's so many parts even in, in the general fund budget that we're dealing with.
Right.
Well, and also, you're looking at that budget differently, because this is the first time we've actually separated out very clearly operational, capital, debt. I mean, we started to, but we really don't have a history of doing that. So that's an important factor.
Well, I thought it was, I thought it was critical for the, for the voters to understand what each piece is, because then you can see where, that's what goes on, you know, technically, that's our budget forever, for lack of a better word, excluding inflation and all that. The, the rest of this stuff is specific to specific functions, whether it's paying off old debt, or we gotta build a couple of roads, or we gotta rebuild Killington Road, or Republic State, those are separate issues.
Right.
You know, and, and I want everybody to keep that in mind.
Okay. And it's- Good job, Chat.
Thank you.
The vote this year isn't just for this year.
No.
Depending on what these are.
It's actually, what I really hope-
What everyone needs to understand.
It, it's the same philosophy that I hoped to get across last year with the, the 75,000 for the pool. What I'm hoping to get is a vote from the public that understands what our current financial situation is, and what our plan going forward is.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that there's no surprises going forward.
Right.
So we voted on the 75,000, and it passed for the pool.
Right.
And it should have been, no, it was told, and it was known, by voting yes for that, it would add one penny to the tax rate.
Right.
And that's what you ended up doing here, is putting that penny in.
Yeah.
Now, but that penny was never actually collected, even though we put the money in?
Did we cha, did we charge that rate?
No, we charged that, we, we actually added it to the tax rate.
Oh, okay.
Because when, when, when I first started, when we were doing the tax bill, I said, we, we added the 75,000 to the budget.
Yeah.
Increased at that rate. That's why the, the rate went out at .4127 versus .4051.
Right.
Okay, okay.
That, so it actually is included in this year's tax rate.
And I thought you said that, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. Any other questions that have to do with this general budget here?
No.
Okay. That's good. Do we have questions from audience?
Can I ask one question about the golf course finance?
Yeah.
So the golf course has been allowed to borrow the 250,000. Is that gonna come up? Is that correct? Getting a 250,000 loan?
The golf course got the 250,000.
And so that 250,000 is for operating expenses from basically January till the golf course reopens, correct?
Right.
Yeah. That's traditionally what they actually borrow from the town.
Yeah, they run, they run-
Yeah.
And this time, they will be paying their own note back in December, along with the interest for that specific note.
Perfect. Thank you.
But realize, if for some reason, there's some bad year, the town is liable for that money.
Yes.
No, but I'm just saying that out, that, you know-
The reality is, the, the note is written to the town, and it just goes into the Green Mountain Golf Course.
And it, and it sounds all great that they're going to pay it back, plus the interest, but it's something, 1% chance, whatever, we're on the hook for it.
Right.
But it's part of the process of what we've been doing over the last several years, of completely separate it financially.
That's what the vote is voted on when the golf course got put in, we can't change that.
The financials.
Okay. Do you have-
That's green, all right.
-town financials that you can put up?
I do.
Budget report?
Do, do-
I have-
Budget summary report. I gave you the, I, I-
I have budget report 2018, uh, December 2018.
Yeah, that's this there.
Okay, that's the town financials.
Okay. Right now, on the revenue side, the only thing really to report is, I think we are running, we are definitely running a little bit ahead on, on tax collections this year. We have gotten a lot of people, there's been so many transfers of property, we've actually had quite a few delinquent taxes come current.
Yeah.
So I think we're in a, we're in a good place there. How it affects next year, I'm not sure yet. But we are doing better than expected on that. Our expenses are still pretty much on track, with the exception of the town manager and the severance package. Sorry about that. The current town manager?
He's not getting a severance package.
No, I'm at, that we're, we just paid part of one in the beginning of this year, which is throwing things over.
Yeah, so all that stuff is behind us, and that's not-
Right, no, I just kind of love-
All that stuff is behind, and it's also the golf course stuff, too. It's all gone.
But other than that, I think everything's tracking right on target. I don't see anything, the only thing that I feel that I would say that we're at risk for is sand salt, and, and chains and tires and things like that. So on the, on the highway side, right now, we're running a little bit, we're more than halfway through our sand pile. And we had, we had a good-
As far as you are.
Yeah. I mean, it's just, it, it's been, because, you know, the thing that people don't realize is, if we get a quarter inch in ice, or 1 inch of snow, or 6 inches of snow, it takes the same amount of sand for that storm.
Right.
So, and, and when it's ice, the problem is, is you have to do it multiple times sometimes, because it sinks into the ice, so it, it just is one of those things. But that would be the only thing that I would have a concern about, as far as expense goes for this year.
Well, if we have a lot of 6-inch snowstorms, it's really good for the town, so we-
We, we actually like, the big snowstorms, you don't, you put down a little bit at the beginning, and you don't touch it again till the end.
You got one of them this weekend? You got one coming this weekend?
Yes, we do. Oh, and right now, all the trucks, I shouldn't say it, they're in good shape.
Yeah, don't even jinx us.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry.
Knock on plywood. Motion to accept the budget report for December 2018? Please say aye.
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 I was gonna say, I see the select board expenses are a little light.
Yeah. Okay. Do you have something you want to bring up before we leave?
Yeah, I was just, capital projects fund. We've actually paid 1.7 million.
There's, there's, yeah, there's an error there that we have not paid. The capital project funds, we've put out the correct amount. I'm not, there's a, there's a technicality there, I saw, that I will dig into. That's not-
You had said something about front-ending that, so that should be approximately the 868.
When we, when we went through it in August, we actually took all of the mon, all of the numbers that were in the budget, and actually paid those over. Something's been expended there that's not supposed to, and I will take care of that.
Okay. I was just gonna say, because that's a-
I saw that, and I just, I was, yeah, I wasn't trying to hide it, but I, it's something I have to address.
You know, and I'm, I'm looking, and I, I think it's just because simply you, sometimes we pay things a little bit more front-end than we normally do.
Yeah, no, that's not that.
But, but I'm assuming you're saying, for example, like with professional services, which is, you know, 91 as opposed to 125, that we, we just simply have front-ended-
When are we meeting again, Chat?
Well, I'm-
February 5th is our-
Well, no, we have, we have, we have to have at least one, possibly two more this month.
Yeah.
It's gonna be in the 25th range.
Okay, so you'll, you'll, you'll have this updated.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Just don't have it on the 22nd.
Well, here, the thing that, the thing that I wanted to, that I, I'm pretty sure I know where it is, is the way, all of our funds, in the capital fund, get transferred to the restricted fund when we first do it. All of those are paid out of the restricted fund. The only thing that doesn't do that-
Yeah.
-is the fire department.
Ah.
The fire department is paid out of the capital, and then the correction is made at the end of the year.
Correct.
And that fund is, is very close to what I'm anticipating is, like, the purchase of the land and all of those things, even though the bond money went in to offset it. So I just want to clarify that, and, and I believe that's all, pretty much most of the money is related to the public safety facility.
Okay. At our next meeting, you'll have that correction.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you the exact amount, because it may have to stay looking that negative, but I'll have the exact allocation for you.
Okay.
Okay.
So we could amend, no, we're just, who, who made the motion to accept?
I did.
Okay. If you can amend it to make the amendment, or withdraw, or whatever, and then we'll just-
Well, accepting it is accepting the explanations, not necessarily the amendment of the report itself.
Okay. So put all that other discussion before the, okay? We accept it as, with the, with all those explanations.
With the explanation of the actual funds.
With, with a new one coming to us.
Right.
I just would hate to see it in the minute, saying that we approved it, and then we had discussion afterwards.
Do you have a board of liquor control?
We have a couple. Two renewals. One is the deli at Killington Corners, and one is Lookout Bar and Grill. They're both first-class renewals.
Make a motion to allow La Creche to move forward?
One second.
The deli and the Lookout Bar and Grill.
La Creche signs those. They're just making a motion to have her sign.
In favor of having-
La Creche must sign.
Should we be using her title instead of her name?
The town clerk.
Town clerk.
Yes.
Yeah. Please say aye.
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 Two ayes and one abstain.
Abstain. Oh, yeah. No, no, no. Recuse.
Recuse.
She can't abstain, she has to recuse.
And I have one special event permit for Long Trail Brewing Company at the Killington Resort K1 Lodge, 4-ounce sample cups, on February 9th.
Is that something we actually approve, or that's just-
No, it's just basically, yeah, the town clerk will sign it, and-
It's our FYI.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we don't sign anything.
No.
No.
Thank you for letting us know.
We have to approve the town clerk to sign.
No, I don't think we do.
No?
Not for special events, I don't think so.
Oh, not for special events.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, just for liquor licenses.
Long Trail's coming in with their, what do they call that? License, Patty? You go off to somebody else's?
Catering permit.
Catering permit, yeah, and they can do whatever.
Okay.
We don't second on three. We don't second on three. You might, you might have to come to our first meeting where we set the rules.
Yeah.
It's hard, though. Jim comes out of the big meeting for the school and tries to second if I say it.
Sometimes seconded, and I'm told we don't have to.
So I just let him make the motion.
Once you have three people, you don't have to second it. But when you have 18, or down in the city, when you have how many?
Yep. Yep.
Yeah.
Did you bring up what you had under business?
Other business, no.
Not yet. No, I got, I was just, I wanted, before I give you that, just another FYI when I was talking about the issue related to the, the capital funds. The, currently, the restricted fund that's for the, the fire department is held at TD Bank. We are moving that also over to Peoples', which will then eliminate the process of going back and forth. We are fixing that and getting it all under one, which means it will no longer have its own separate treasurer's report. It'll just be one of the funds within the report. So we are making that transition as well, for things like this.
It'll become a line item as opposed to another report.
Correct.
And, and, because in, what was it, three years ago, four years ago, there was a, a missed transfer of funds that had a.
I don't think that would, that wouldn't change that.
No, this, this just, this is, this is.
It's still gonna be a separate, it, it's gonna be underneath the town.
Yes. It's just, it's just gonna be shown as its own reserve.
But somebody forgot to make the transfer from the town, not the bank.
Right, but it affected the treasurer's report significantly.
Right, 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 yeah.
So this is, we need an authorization for the chair to sign this authorization. This is an authorization to have the, the new checking account that we have for golf in Peoples'.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to allow the chair to sign the document to transfer the golf course to Peoples' bank, bank account for Peoples'. No second.
So can I actually vote on this?
Yes.
If I'm the one signing it?
Yeah.
Doesn't really matter. I think Patty and I can just say yes anyway.
Okay.
It's on, it's just where she has the tag.
You force you to sign it, I guess.
Because those, those are, yeah, those are for the people who are gonna be authorized signers.
You just need to say all in favor.
That's Mona Hickory.
All in favor?
Aye. You don't have to say anything, even if you didn't want to sign it.
Good job.
Even if you didn't want to sign it, you're signing it.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, do you want to be it? Nobody's filled it.
Nobody, yeah, nobody's filled it.
Ken, Ken Kind used to love that. Actually, currently, we don't have a town agent. We're, we're trying to draft one.
There's a line for the.
We have that.
We have that. We don't have a town agent. Well, our town agent passed away this year.
Tree warden.
I nominate Roger.
Well, in order for you to move, you would have to move to Killington.
Didn't you already run through that several times over with?
City, no, town agent, no, I never ran through.
Yeah.
Oh, that was EJ, that was EJ, that's right.
Is there other business?
That was all I had.
So executive session for personnel and contract. And it's really only gonna be like five minutes if anyone wants to hang around about the golf course.
I have one for personnel, too.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I mean, you want to just go in quick and then come out on the golf course thing?
It'll literally take five minutes.
Okay, so if anyone wants to hang around, then, okay?
On the golf course, or wait till that adjustment's been made?
Well, I would just like, you know, we said that we would go into executive session on the Green Mountain National Golf Course budget, and I had a question, and it was basically personnel, and I would like to wait for that adjustment to be made.
Right.
And, and since it's personnel, it will come out, the budget numbers will be changed